All right, welcome, everybody. Okay, excuse me. Excuse me. All right. This is a city council meeting with a public hearing in advance. I know we have people in attendance, probably a little bit more than what we normally have in our room. We ask that you be respectful and be quiet as we try to run our meeting. We are having a public hearing where anybody that wants to speak will have the ability to speak. But when you're not speaking, we would appreciate it if you would just be quiet and listen, just like we're going to be very attentive to what you have to say. So with that said, I will call this public hearing to order. This has to do with proposed Wopaka Taxi Cap changes. Today is Tuesday, July 15, 2025, and it's around 6:00 PM. We'll call this meeting to order, and I'm just going to ask Josh to take role of our council members.
Mayor Brian Smith.
Here.
Colin Deichstra.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Eric Halverson.
Here.
Dimitri Martin.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Corey Nagel.
Here.
Eric Olson.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Scott Pachatsky.
Here.
Henry Velikar.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I'm not going to say too much because I'm actually going to turn it over to Stephanie. We're going to do a little bit more explaining than we, than what was just put in the newspaper, just so that people understand. We want to make sure that everybody understands what we're proposing to do tonight. I'm sure, I'm feeling that there's some misinformation that got out there, and we want to make sure that you fully understand what city councils trying to do tonight. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Stephanie, and then I'll take over after she gets done. But again, she's just going to explain exactly what we're trying to do tonight. And the difference between what we're doing at the public hearing versus, we actually have two motions going on that have to do with the taxi. One of them just has to do with the public hearing. The other one does not require a public hearing for that. So Stephanie.
Thank you, Mayor. The purpose of this public hearing is to notify the city council and the public of the proposed reduction in shared ride taxi service hours for the remainder of 2025. This hearing is strictly to gather feedback and input on proposed service hour reductions. In interest of full transparency, we are also sharing our proposal to not renew the current contract with Brown Cab Services for 2026. Although the decision to pursue a request for proposal for future service is independent from the proposed service hour reductions, it reflects a broader strategy aimed at enhancing long-term financial sustainability. A little bit of background on this. The City of Wopaka's Shared Ride Taxi Program is currently facing a significant financial challenge. The local subsidy for program exceeded $116,000 in 2024, and projections for 2025 indicated further increase to approximately $135,000, well beyond the city's approved levied budget of $10,000. Several contributing factors include expiration of ARPA-related federal and state relief, reduced and unstable agency fare revenue, ridership has decreased. Average daily one-way trips declined from 131 per day in 2022 to 112 per day in 2024, while service hours reached a six-year high, creating significant underutilization of the program. Rising operational costs have gone up 45% since 2018. Given these trends, immediate action is necessary to reduce the financial burden on the city's general fund. The proposed change in service hours are also listed. This is all in your handouts for everybody who has showed up today. To help mitigate the 2025 budget deficit, the city, in collaboration with WISDOT and Brown Cab, proposes to reduce service hours effective August 1st of 2025 through the end of the current contract, which is December 31st of 2025. Also listed in your packet are the days and the current service hours, along with the new proposed hours. So I won't list them all. It looks, it looks as though it's in your packet as well, so. In the council meeting to follow this public hearing, staff will be recommending the common council that the City of Wopaka reduce service hours as mentioned above, and also to not renew the existing contract with Brown Cab Services for the Shared Ride Taxi Program in 2026, and instead initiate a request for proposal to explore more cost-effective and sustainable transit options. The city is working closely with the Wopaka County to find a better long-term transportation option that will serve both city residents and people in nearby areas. A goal is to create a service that is more efficient, affordable, and useful for everyone. Attached to this report are additional resources and programs available to meet the diverse transportation needs of residents outside of the Shared Ride Taxi Program. So I encourage you all to look through your packets and look into some of these services that are offered. This is, this is really neat that we have this many other opportunities for those needs in our community.
Thank you, Steph. So let me set this up a little bit for council members first. Actually, the public hearing is, to make sure that you understand this, the public hearing is just for the proposed changes of hours for the rest of 2025. The RFP are going out for bid to, to be able to alter the current contract that we have is a separate subject, and like I said before, does not require a public hearing, but it is on your agenda tonight as one of the action items that you'll be voting on, to allow staff to go out to RFP or to work with, for example, like the county, to go out to RFP with them and see if we can't make this work a little bit better. I'm still waiting for Barb to come back with the list for me to start the public hearing. I do want to tell you exactly how we handle this. In public hearings, it's for your public comment only. It's not a question and answer. So if you ask something and a question, we aren't going to answer those questions. It's just for you to, to make your comments. When we do call you up, please step up to the podium, grab that microphone and either move it up or down, and then let go of the microphone. Once you have it in a position where it's right in front of your mouth. And so, I'm sorry, what? Facebook. And here I am, not speaking into the microphone. Sorry for those of you that are in the, in the excess area. People that are over in Library A and B, there's some individuals over there. We're actually sending that through Facebook Live to them, so they are getting everything that's in here. They might not be able to see everybody that we see in here, but they'll be able to hear us. It, I understand it's like a 15 to 30-second delay on Facebook compared to what we have here. Let me go back to that again. Once you're, if you want to speak, and I'll call out the names that, that signed up to speak tonight, you will walk up to the podium, grab the microphone, put it to where we can hear you. You don't have to be right up against it, but the closer you are, the better you can hear everybody. And that's also to make sure that it gets on Facebook, too. So you have three minutes. It's a strict three minutes, so you, it's three minutes or less, obviously. If you only have 30 seconds, you want to talk to us, that's fine. You will not be allowed to speak any more than, than three minutes on a topic. We're going to take, if you signed up, that's the only way that you were able to speak tonight. If you did not sign up, then you will not be able to speak. You're just here to listen, I'm assuming, if you didn't sign up. Again, make sure that you're respectful to the people that are sitting around you, so please don't talk while other people are talking. And also be very respectful to city council members and staff. We are truly here to represent you, and we're trying to do what's best for the community. Make sure that you understand what we're trying to do. I know it, it, it hits you when something like this, when we start discussing things like this, but you'll find out that we've worked very, very hard to make sure that we have the opportunity to serve people, especially the people, the elderly, the disabled, that, that rely so much more on the taxi service than others. So again, I give a lot of credit to our staff. They've worked for over a month now on trying to come up with a good plan for you. But one of the things, and again, going back to the public hearing, one of the things that they are recommending, and this also came from Brown Cab, we asked for some cost savings, and they did recommend these new hours, too. So this is coming directly from the service that, that is offered, which is Brown Cab Service. I'm going to do this not in the order that necessarily that you signed in. I'm going to go through the list, and I'm going to pick out city residents to speak first. This is a city service. Many of you people that are here tonight are probably not in the city, but we are going to allow city people to speak first. I do ask, as you go through this, we have a lot of people, we have a, a long meeting tonight. If there's some redundancy, I might ask you to, to limit your time up there, too. But again, we, we appreciate you coming tonight. I know this isn't easy to, for, for you to give up your time, and I'll start with that. So the first one we have on here, and again, you have printed your name, so hopefully I'm, do a good job of reading your names. I'm not misreading your names purposely if I do. I will start the time clock as soon as you step up to the podium. The first one is Julia Hendricks. Julia, if you want to step up, give your name and address for the record, and tell us if you live in the city or not.
Hi, my name is the Reverend Julia Hendricks. I live at 820 Woodland Circle in Wopaka, Wisconsin.
And you are?
I.
Oh, city resident?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. I am the priest of St. Mark's Episcopal Church on Main Street. Founded in 1856, we are the oldest congregation still worshiping within the confines of the city of Wopaka. I come before the council today to express on behalf of my congregation and myself the dismay upon hearing the cut to the budget, which will drastically affect the taxi service in Wopaka. I know that you probably already know that the low fares for the taxi rides give those who have little to no access to transportation the ability to buy their groceries, to go to doctor's appointments, to go to urgent care, to go to the ER, to go to church, among other things. For those who are homebound, disabled, and elderly, the taxi service is a necessary part of their lives. Imagine needing a ride to the ER or urgent care and only having the ambulance to call because the taxi service is not operating at that time. Imagine the expense. But you may not know what other things the taxi service does. Every Tuesday, the First United Methodist Church hosts the feeding program that St. Mark started 30 years ago. Volunteers began preparing a dinner for anyone seeking food and fellowship. As more people started going to the Bread Basket, the name, the weekly dinner outgrew our space. The program founded and, found a new home thanks to the First United Methodist Church. Today, Bread Basket serves more than 150 meals every Tuesday. How does this relate to the taxi service? The taxi service voluntarily takes 50 or more meals each week and distributes them to the homebound, people who struggle to get adequate meals. In addition to their service to the Bread Basket, the taxi service also drives people to the food pantry and to Foundations for Living. The Gospel of Mark reminds us of our duty to those in need. "Come, you who are blessed by my Father. Take your inheritance, the kingdom prepared for you since the creation of the world. For I was hungry, and you gave me something to eat. I was thirsty, and you gave me something to drink. I was a stranger, and you invited me in. I needed clothes, and you clothed me. I was sick, and you looked after me. I was in prison, and you came to visit me." The taxi service is a vital need for Wopaka. Cutting its budget and eliminating the ability to offer low fares will hurt those who are most vulnerable in our community, as well as reducing hours. I urge the city council to find a way to continue to fund the taxi service using the previous schedule for those in our community. Thank you.
I think you practiced that, right? You were right at three minutes.
I do, I do speak for a living.
Very nice. Next up is Lee Traynor. Again, Lee, and hopefully I don't have to repeat this each time, but make sure you pull the microphone down next to you, give your name and address, and let us know whether you live in the city or not.
My name is Lee Traynor. I live at 222 North Main Street, Apartment 302. I am an elderly person. I have fallen on ice on the sidewalks in Wopaka because I was too stubborn to call anybody to give me a ride. I broke this wrist and that arm. Also, I have a petition here, signed by everyone who lives at the Firehouse Apartments. I'd like to submit.
You can, you can just give it to Stephanie right there.
Also, I have here a DOT grant program for public transit, two options, that was sent to me by Chris Gonzalez of the State, Office of State Senator Rachel Cabral-Guvera, and I would like to submit that also for consideration to keep the Wopaka taxi. I also work till 10:00 at night. If you close the taxi at 8:00, I would have to walk on, at 10:00 at night, from my job to my home. I can do it now, but in the winter, I won't be able to do that. And I'd have to either quit my job, or I'd have to alter my hours, which would not make my job, my employer very happy. So I really consider, I really ask that you consider these two options for grants and the needs of the people at 222 North Main Street, Wopaka. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Tyler, sorry, lives at 222 North Main Street. Tyler, are you in here?
Kyle.
I'm sorry, what?
It's Kyle.
Kyle? You want to give your name and address, please?
So my name is Kyle Drew. I live at 222 North Main, Apartment 309, and yes, I am a resident of Wopaka.
Thank you.
The reason why I wanted to talk today is that, few things, and sorry, I'm not a public speaker, so it's going to take me a little bit. I don't know if any of you guys have taken the taxi within the last recent year or two, but the men and women that actually run, drive the taxis and, and run it, they're extremely bogged down. They have a lot of people they have to take care of in a timely fashion. I mean, dialysis patients in the morning, people that get off work in the morning, people that have to go to work in the evening. Takes them a long time, and when they're like two to five people working during the day, one to two working at night, takes them a long time. That's the reason why I feel a lot of these day trips, one-way trips, as you call them, I've been seeing a reduction, because people don't want to wait an hour for a taxi, but they do their best. And they work real hard, trust me. I know them, I, I take a taxi almost every other day. I mean, I have to go grocery shopping, doctor's appointments, take my child to see her doctor. I mean, it's kind of hard to walk from Main Street all the way up Fulton Street, go grocery shopping, carry six to seven bags home at a time. Kind of need the taxi for that. Along with all the, the new hours proposed, 8:00 is a really bad time for everybody that needs to go home at 8:00, or 9:00, 10:00 o'clock, or to work. I mean, a lot of schedules are working 2:00 to 10:00, or 10:00 to 6:00. And I would hopefully that would be taken into consideration with this. And along with the budget, I feel that the budget should be increased. They work real hard, taxis are in need of care, and hopefully that will be something that will be incentivized. Thank you.
Thank you. You're actually a better speaker than you said you were.
Thank you.
Next up is Tammy Servations. Tammy?
Hi. Hi, I'm Tammy Servatius. I live at 733 East Fulton in the city here of Wopaka, which I really dearly love. I'm also the commandant at the Veterans Home at King. I'm here today to talk about the taxi rides going away, and I'm here to represent our members. I'm, I'm here to also let you know that I think this is more of a math problem than anything which everybody is aware of. There are people that have a need, and there are people that do not have a need for it to be subsidized. So what I'm saying is, if there's a way that you could maybe make sure that everybody that needs it subsidized would have some type of an ID that says they're subsidized, I can tell you that the majority of our veterans do not need a subsidized ride, and if we are sending for a taxi for a medical appointment, we would pay the full ride. So the full taxi fare. This is the first city that I've been engaged with that taxi rides are subsidized. I think it's wonderful, because there obviously is a need, but I think it's more of a math problem. So there are people that are using it because they're inebriated, they could pay a full, full fare, but there are people that use it because they have a need. They have a disability, they have, you know, some need, or maybe it's an income situation that they could prove, and so then you would not be subsidizing the majority of all of the rides. So maybe you take the difference of how many rides are left to be subsidized, you divide that up, or divide over the number of rides that you've done over the year to try to figure out, you know, what would we have paid if it would have been a full fare, a full fare ride? What I'm saying is, our members that have a need jump on the bus that we have, and they go for shopping trips. But we have many members that stay with us for free. Anybody that's 70% service-connected or higher, they're free, they're safe for free. So everything that comes in for them is in their own pocket. Maybe a lot of people didn't know that. So our members have the, the means to be able to pay for their rides. So what I'm saying is, if we have a medical appointment, if we have a lab trip that we're asking for you to pick up something, we'll pay the full share. King Veterans Home can pay the full share, non-subsidized. So I don't know if that helps, or maybe it would help going forward with the RFB for the next year, but my thoughts are, I think it's a math problem. And if there, and if there are people that are in need, then maybe there should be some type of a system where you try to figure out who has an actual need versus who does not. That's what I had to say today. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. I don't know. Okay. Next up, we have Kim Attles Simon.
Kim Attles Simon, I live at 719 South Main. So I am a citizen of Wopaka, lifetime citizen, actually. Okay, sorry. I just, I'm here basically to get the knowledge that I needed. I don't utilize the taxi service myself, but with working parents and myself working out of town, sometimes my granddaughter, who is in high school, is in need of a service. So although I'm getting an education by all those that have, you know, extensive needs for this service, I just, you know, wanted to come here with awareness to see if the service will continue and, and that, that service is available to our citizens in the community. And I, and I see very important needs from the others that have shared. So I just wanted to express that, that I, I too find it comforting that there is a service in Wopaka that I can call on when others can't help give my granddaughter a ride. So thank you for giving me a moment.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Next up, we have Dave Richardson.
Dave Richardson, I live at 719 South Main Street, Wopaka. I just, just some general comments. It's interesting to me that there's only $10,000 budgeted for a city to have a transportation service. My question is, and you don't have to answer it, obviously, but in the last two years, you've been over by hundreds of, hundreds of thousands of dollars. How come there wasn't an adjustment before that? I mean, if your budget was $10,000, and 2024 was $116,000, I doubt it was $10,000 in 2023. So I think that's something that needs to get looked at. I think the other thing, if you look at your reduction in hours and the effect it's going to have on the public starting on August 1st, you really should plan on having a full service for the end of the year. I mean, starting August 1st is two weeks from now. And so it, it has a lot of effect. Obviously, you're seeing a lot of the public here, so I would recommend that you extend the hours as they are through the end of the year. You're already over budget. And I think the RFP is a great idea. That's how you get competitive. I think talking to the county is a great idea, but do that before you decide to reduce the service. So I, I would ask you to take that into account. Thank you.
Next is Charles Rushford. Charles?
I didn't have a comment.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. I see you say no, I'm sorry. I should read across. I should follow my own rules, right? Okay. Next up is Bob Adams.
Thank you, city council, for letting us speak. So looking at this, I want to just address the issue, looking at the taxi issue from the three hats I wear in the community. One is the executive director of Foundations for Living, the second as a pastor of 20 years at Radiant Fellowship Church, and then third as a school board member that also has kids in the, in the program. So at Foundations for Living, we utilize the taxi often, we use their voucher program, and it really comes in handy. Just a couple, a few days ago, we had a gentleman, a veteran, a homeless veteran in his 70s, due to mental issues, found himself out of state at Foundations for Living, and we ended up getting him, working with the VA, getting him back to where he needed to go. And part of that process was using the taxi, so it is a valuable asset to our city. Regarding, on the church side of life, we often, not often, but we do see people that are recovering from Saturday night, shall we call festivities, and not sure about their driving abilities in the morning, and so they utilize a taxi. You know, what better place to go on a Sunday morning than after a rough Saturday night? So we, we see that being utilized in our, in the church world with multiple churches, you know, that people depend on that to get around. Then on the school district side, whether it's picking up my little guy from WLC, or my oldest ones from the high school, we do see taxis going in and out, transferring kids around. And so one thing that I did not know, that I, when I came into this program tonight, is that I'm encouraged that you guys are actively looking for other contracts. Being on the nonprofit side of life and looking at the city council here as well, I understand the budgetary wrestling that needs to happen publicly for the city. This is a tough decision. Looking at it fiscally, it seems like an easy decision. But I would just encourage you to, to find a way to maybe get another program in here if it's not Brown County. I'm, I'm from Milwaukee, 30 years there. When I moved here, I was surprised at how inexpensive our taxi service is, but if there are changes that need to be made, then perhaps we introduce other shared ride programs. But I think the taxi service would be greatly beneficial, and so thank you for hearing my thoughts.
Michelle Modi? Maydi? Thank you.
Yes, hi, Michelle Maydi, N2730 Norris Lane, Wopaka. I actually live out on the chain. Blessed, blessed to be there. I understand the difficulties of, of budgeting, for sure. My mother went to Bethany last August after a stroke event. She hadn't been home in 10 months, and on July 4th, a holiday, she was able to take the taxi and go home for the first time and see her entire extended family. It was really wonderful. We paid, I believe, $11.50 each way, and I tipped the driver very, very well, both ways, and we were very thankful, very good driver. I don't know what other options would have been available to us on the holiday, but it was, it was invaluable for us and for my mother. I don't know about 2:00 AM bar time, I'm not in that milieu, but I, I'm, I'm sure, other than that, I'm sure the taxi provides a very good service. And I moved to Madison 25 years ago because they had public transportation, and I'm just wondering if we could ever have a city bus. Don't know.
Okay. Okay. We, we have some people. So if you have spoken? So if you have spoken, uh, it would be nice, if you don't mind, if you would go in to the library rooms and allow those people that are waiting over there. That would be awesome. You should be able to see what we're doing.
Steven is the next one up?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, I'll, he can make his track, I'll, I'll call somebody else. I have Nolan. You want to go ahead, Nolan, while we're doing this?
Yeah, my name's Nolan Seawell. I live at 2, uh, 400 South Western Avenue, apartment 216 here in Wapaka. My primary concerns happen to do with not only the hours, but also the service. Uh, it's hard enough, after 10 o'clock, get from the emergency room over back to my place when the hospital throws us out. That's after 10. Now you're talking about cutting it back to 8. It's going to be even worse. And to make matters even worse than that is, I know a lot of people that live on the east side of town, they have to do their shopping on the west side of town. Now, we cut those services out, those people are gypped of good, meaningful, um, shopping experience. The other thing is, is that the Wapaka Taxi is the only service that I know of in this city that actually has wheelchair accessibility. And I have a lot of friends that are immobilized that require wheelchair accessible transportation. Now, I appreciate the council, staff, mayor, president, taking this time to hear me out. Thank you.
Thanks, Nolan.
Uh, Steven says he doesn't need to speak.
Let's, uh, go to, is Megan Gwinski here? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
All right. Well, you, you pronounce it better for me then. Okay. Go ahead.
My name is Megan, oh, can you hear me? Sorry.
Keep it loud.
My name is Megan Siewinski. I live on 650 West Union Street.
Okay.
Um, so, at the peer age of 17, and just a year after being handed my license, I was also ripped away of that license due to personal health reasons. These reasons left me chronically ill and what my doctors believed to be 5% to 10% of my vision. With that being said, I did what I had to do as an adult, and I completed college. I started working in my career path, and I've been taking the taxicab for nothing less than four to five days a week to and from work since I began daycare, uh, three years Please, if you would, imagine a life without a license or any form of transportation to get you to those necessary places, and a life strictly because of a medical impairment that left you with minimal vision. It's an everyday in my life, but I make it work, and right now I'm thriving in a life that did not want to see me thrive. If the Wapaka Taxi and the resources are cut from me, my ability to continue to thrive are also cut from me. I love my job in healthcare and, but I will be unable to work without my 645 taxicab pickup rides from Amy, Wendy, Richard, and Ron. It'd be a total loss for myself and my patients that I love to help and have so much care for. Thank you for your time.
Uh, next is, uh, Carol Elvery. I think I saw her walk in here. Carol, three minutes.
I'll abide by that, as everybody else has been had to. I wouldn't be the first to be called, I don't believe. I'm sorry. Uh, I'm Carol Elvery, I live at 33 Shadow Woods Lane. As the people around me can understand, he has heard me talk many times, but not about the taxi. And the taxi is a great service, and you already have heard how many other people have depended on it. And of course, I now live at Bethany, and I have depended on it myself. My husband couldn't get to breakfast on Fridays, except he could get the taxi. And then one day, he didn't, he, the, the, he wasn't ready, and the taxi had to leave him. And then he had to get to breakfast still, he thought. Remember, he hasn't been driving now that time for two years, but he knew his car keys were still on the table, and he knew the way to Rose Garden, he'd be fine. And he was that time. After that happened, the keys, he doesn't have them anymore, and I know where they are, but he doesn't. Uh, but anyway, that just shows you that even regular people, as well as all the other people, need the taxi for all kinds of weird reasons. And it's a wonderful service, and I've seen them take those 40 meals at Bread Basket many a times. I do want to point out that the city has spent a lot of money improving their downtown and their main street and all that, and it's beautiful, and it has appealed to tourists, and it's made it a destination site. And now it's time to help the other people who live in this town and make this town work, because you've already heard of some of the people that work later in the evening and need that taxi to get them home and need the help for that. So I know you also have grant writers, and they've been incredibly successful. And I would challenge them to start looking for grants to help with public transportation and those sort of services within the community. And I thank you.
Thank you, Carol. It is nice to see you. Next up, we have, oh my goodness, um, Jet, it's, uh, Ditman is the last name.
Delena.
Delena, okay.
So I live off Churchill Street. I use the taxicabs.
What is your, what is your address? Physical address?
It's 927 Churchill Street. So I use the taxicab service to get safe rides home after I've been drinking, so I don't have to drink and drive. The new hours would not benefit me, as they are no longer open during the hours when I need the safe rides home. I just used the taxi service on July 4th to get a safe ride to the chain, because I knew I was going to be out on the boat drinking that whole day. I would have felt comfortable paying whatever for the taxi ride, because it's cheaper than a DUI, and everyone knows that the police are out in Wapaka County. The ride ended up being $10, and I tipped $10. I was thankful for the option to have that ride there, so my vehicle wasn't stuck there. If you call R and R, you get their voicemail, which isn't helpful at all when you're calling for a safe ride home. There is the option for Uber around here, but drivers are never available on the app to be booked. I experienced this firsthand on the 4th of July this year, because the taxi service closed early for the holiday, and I was not able to obtain a ride home from the Indian Crossing Casino, and I had to call a ride home from a friend. This program that you are suggesting in your brochure, only two businesses in Wapaka participate in. I downloaded the app to see what exactly it does to help you get a safe ride home, and it just shows you what establishments participate and their phone number to call them to see what they offer. I understand the need to cut budgets, but this is not the place where you should be cutting the budget, as it's affecting many people that depend on the service. I think you should extend the service with the normal hours through the end of the 2025 year while you work on coming up with a plan.
Uh, Adrienne, or is it Adrian Edwards? Is that right? Is there an Adrian? All right, let's go to Bonnie, Bonnie Pronger? None of them are? Okay. All right. Okay. All right. So that's it. Council, that's it for city residents that have spoke tonight. I'll go back, uh, what's, what's your name? All right. You, you didn't put your address, so we don't know where you live, so we're going to go down the list. You'll, you'll get a chance, though. All right? If you're on here, Jane, you didn't put your address, so we didn't know that you were a city resident, so we're going to just go down the line. So I'm sorry, there are a couple more. Let's go, uh, Steven Hendricks. Please, uh, actually, he's, looks like he's, he said no, okay. You're Adrian?
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Can you get through that? He said hasta la vista?
My name is Adrian Edwards, and I've been a Wapaka resident for six years. My husband was at King, and there were times where I had to take the cab to and from King. The service was outstanding. I have difficulty getting into the cab, and so there was always, always a stool for me to get into the cab, and I really appreciate it. I don't know what I would do without the, the service of the Wapaka Taxi. And, um, I just pray you know that we find a solution to this and that, uh, we'll all be better for it.
Thank you. Okay, let's, uh, go to Audrey Lubinski. Again, make sure you give your name and address, um, for the record.
Audrey Lubinski, E1316 Hillcrest Drive, Wapaka, Wisconsin. My husband is, uh, disabled, and he's wheelchair-bound, and we are probably three miles from the Portage County line, and the Wapaka Taxi has provided service for us to be able to go to appointments for doctors, appointments, dentists. They've been available when I've requested them. I've called the Phoenix Program that has been, um, had, given like, I believe, like $2 million from the Wisconsin, whatever. Anyway, the governor. But, uh, they didn't have any wheelchair service provided, and then I called later on, and they said they had a wheelchair van, but they're trying to figure out, um, have everybody get trained on it. And then, um, I was told that people that were going to be, needed a ride to work would take priority over the appointments, so I really couldn't schedule something, because if people had to go to work and I wanted the appointment, those people would take first responsibility. When our, first, they would get first choice. When I call the taxi, those guys will come whenever I ask. If I might have to wait, but I mean, I try to schedule a day ahead of time, but I just want to say the Wapaka Taxi has been in existence for a long time. I never planned on using it, but I'm really glad it is in place and it's as stable as it is. They provide a great service, and I would be willing to pay a higher fare. It's very reasonable, but I think anybody that's private pay would be willing to pay a higher fare to get transportation. I can't afford buying a wheelchair van and the insurance for a wheelchair van, and I'm getting older. I can't push them around. So the person, when I, we go with the taxi, I'm able to attend without having to pay a fee, and the taxi drivers are very helpful. Also, I did call the ADRC for Wapaka County to see if there was something eligible. Nothing for a wheelchair van. They have volunteers that work the program, but you have to be able to walk and get in the car. Um, also, um, I did call medical transportation, professional medical transportation, for someone to come and pick up my husband from our home on Hillcrest Drive and take us to Wapaka County, or to Riverside, or Theater Care, Wapaka. It costs, it, the cost would be a minimum of 60 bucks for the round trip. Right now, I think it's about $9.50 each way for my husband, so I would be willing to pay more. Please don't, don't get rid of this taxi. Goodbye.
Audrey, thank you. No, I can't get it to stop. Uh, Jeanie Pesky.
Hey, stop. Hi, my name's Jeanie Pesky. I reside at N2443 Parfryville Road in Wapaka, Wisconsin. And I just want to say, as you can see here, there's a lot of handicapped and people that need to have the taxi. Someday, you guys are all going to be there, and I hope that there is a taxi in Wapaka for you guys to utilize. Um, both my parents reside at the, the Veterans Home at King. Prior to them moving to the Veterans Home, I utilized a taxi many times to get my parents, both who are in a wheelchair, to family functions, including family funerals. Um, now that they reside at the W V H, I can utilize a taxi to go take them out to dinner, take them to the grocery store, and I do not, and I do not own an accessible van. I have a van, but I can't get the wheelchairs in there. Um, the Wapaka Taxi has been, done an outstanding job when I've needed them. They show up when you want them. They are excellent with the patients that they're transporting, and I agree with Tammy Servasius that the subsidizing, we need to look at something, something different. It's a numbers game, and we've got to figure out some way to keep that taxi, because trust me, you guys are all going to need it someday. Thank you.
I'm Carrie Riley, 11092 State Highway 54 in Amherst. So I, um, my children go to the Wapaka School District. Um, I have grown up in Wapaka, and, um, yep, I live on the Portage County line. But many families here, I know, um, use the service, and I've been in foster care and, and needing that service for, for those people that I've worked with. But, um, Kyle, who spoke earlier, uh, we co-parent his daughter Amber, and he uses that service, and I think it's so important that we keep the service hours for the extended times, um, throughout the rest of the year. I think by all the people's comments here today, we've, you're hearing that there still is a need, um, and I know you're looking at services, but I think to cut that in midstream might not be the best way to do that, because it leaves people scrambling, um, in, in these situations in the next two weeks. So again, I'm thankful that you're continuing to look into future, um, ways, but, um, you'll see there's a need that shouldn't be cut immediately, so I hope we can look at continuing that. But thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Dennis Amateur.
My name is Dennis Amateur. I'm from E2317 Julie Lane, Wapaka. Um, I was misinformed. I heard that the taxi was going away, so I looked, came here loaded for bear. But I'm glad, because my, my son's disabled, he uses a taxi quite a bit. Um, I did work for the taxi for a couple of years, and, uh, after certain hours, you know, people indulge a little bit more. I've taken them home, sometimes have to walk them up to their house, because they can't walk anymore. I mean, it ain't bad, but when you have to clean puke out of the taxi, it's not fun. But I, I think we should, uh, look at different options and try to keep that, keep that going. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dennis. Justin? No, I'm sorry. He said he didn't want to... So the other ones do? I'm trying to figure this out, because we had some people that didn't fill the form out properly. So let's, let's try Beth Ann Zellmer. Do you wanna talk?
Good evening. My name is Beth Ann Zellmer. I live at 1318 Stone Ridge Road, Apartment 1, here in Wapaka. I came to Wapaka about... in 2022 with my husband. We both are veterans. My husband Harold was, found that he needed to go to a nursing home. And King Veterans Home was here, and they took him. I was with him every single day. I do not drive, because I have seizures. And I used the taxi here in Wapaka to take, to see my husband. I would, when I got there, it would be from that time till about 6:00 in the afternoon, because I needed to get home and get things done. But I was always with my husband, and I couldn't have done that without the Wapaka Taxi Service. It was a godsend. Well, my husband died in 2023. And it was very heartbreaking. But I had made the friends with the drivers at Wapaka Taxi Service, and I got to know Wapaka a lot better. I rely on them a lot. I'm also a veteran, and I am with the American Legion right now. But I, to get to meetings, sometimes I need a taxi service if no one can pick me up. They take me even to my doctor appointments. And I don't know how I'm going to do that now, if I'm going to have to... I, I don't know. But all I can say is, Wapaka Taxi Service has meant a great deal to me. And I just hope that something can replace it if it is no longer needed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Diane Jorgensen. Again, I don't know if it's a yes or no, so if she's not in here, I'll go to... Just have a few left here. Gloria Mather.
Gloria is, excuse me. Gloria said she isn't coming.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Elizabeth Tuckis? Okay. I, I have no idea. It doesn't say yes or no. How about Jane? Jane, you wanna talk? Say your name for us, too, when you get up there, Jane.
Hello, my name is Jane Legault. I'm at 1218 Berlin Street, and this is my friend Becky Brownlow. And we together got 504 people to sign our petition regarding the changes in the, in the taxi service. So I wanted to show you that Becky has used that service for 25 years to get to the things that she's needed to get to, particularly her job. And without that, she would not be able to work in the city of Wapaka. I would, I understand that in the past, that the taxi service has actually been in the black, and we, the city council didn't have to stick in any money. This was a while back, but maybe, maybe that same plan could be re-looked at as to how that happened, that there, you know, there wasn't a lot of money that came out of the coffers for the taxi. And I would, I would just ask us to be as open to any suggestions as possible and any grants, or perhaps if people from the Foundry are using this program, perhaps they could be sticking a little money towards that as, as well, or other, other places. I think we need to be just active in, in our, our ways of looking at this. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one last one here. Elizabeth Rasmussen. Elizabeth? Alright.
Not Elizabeth, but I didn't get a chance to sign in. I had to go in the other room.
Were you here by 6:00? Go ahead. Go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead. We're gonna ask you to sign something afterwards.
Okay.
Please.
I'm Gary Thompson. I live at 2830 Otter Drive, Unit B in Wapaka. I have known Becky almost her whole life, and it's how she gets around. My question is, which you can't answer, and some of the people weren't even, like, listening. They're on their computers, and I mean, if this is all the board here...
Okay, you can sit down then. Thank you.
Well, I just wanna say how many of you are a part of...
You're done.
How many of you are a part of...
You are done. You are done talking.
Truth, truth.
You are done.
So I hope you change your mind. I hope they...
You are done. That's what you get for being a nice guy. Yes, sir. You can. Give me your name and address.
My name's David McCuskey. I live on Stone Ridge Road, Timberline Apartments. And I'll make this short and sweet. I use Wapaka Taxi a lot. I'm a retired veteran. I can't drive. I have epilepsy and Alzheimer's I was diagnosed with now. There are a lot of people in the apartment complex where I live that use it to go to work and come back. Problem is, if you use Catcher Ride, you have to get a hold of them 24 hours in advance. Otherwise, they won't be able to do anything. A lot of times, what they do is if they're too busy, they will cancel your ride. And that affects a lot of people, you know, as far as for going to work, doctors or whatever. I've had it where my ride has been canceled a couple times, where they've called up and said, "I can't pick you up," so I have to use Wapaka Taxi. They're a great service, and I'd really hate to see their hours cut. Or, you know, if you guys could figure something out, it'd be fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth? Eric, you wanna pull that chair away, and then she can go right where that microphone is, right there?
Chair, pull that off.
Elizabeth, can you give us your name and address, please?
Okay. Hi. Can you hear me?
We can. Give your name and address, please.
Okay. Elizabeth Talges, I live at 412 Wisconsin Street in the 3rd Ward. And I've been a resident of Wapaka for 32 years. A lot of the time, I was able to drive my own vehicles. Well, now I have an amputation of my leg. Now I can't drive. I had a van, and it was deemed totally undrivable. It looked beautiful on the outside, terrible on the underside. So I had to get rid of it. So the only thing I can rely on now is all my doctor's appointments, which I have a lot of, they're in Wapaka. And I do like to go to King, because there's some elderly people that I've made friends with out there. And that would be taken away. But... What my case manager says is, "Well, if you can afford to get a van, a plain van without handicap accessibility, they will put in a van, an accessible ramp in that van." Well, the van has to be less than five years old. And with the way we're running right now, you know, if you, anybody here has $38,000 or $30,000, you know, give it to me, because I just certainly don't have it. I mean, it's not gonna happen. And those kinds of things are just so backwards in the system that it just makes it impossible for us. And I'm only on a certain amount of budget that I... Most of my medical trips are at Mayo Clinic in Mass, in Minnesota. But like I said, I have rides for that, whether it be family or otherwise. But the rides in town are very numerous, and I don't know. The taxi's always been there for me on time, you know, hardly ever not on time. And it's just like, I don't know what I'd do. And my helpers, I do have home care workers. Well, they have cars, and my chair is not going to be getting in a car. And so we just don't have anything that would travel with my type of wheelchair at this point. It would require a whole big, a lot of deal to, to make this happen. When, it's so nice that the Wapaka Taxi does have wheelchair ramps in their taxis. So I just beg you to think about that and think about the things that you're gonna need when you get to be my age, actually. I've been disabled since I was eight years old, but now I'm 70. So it's all come together, and I've got no other options, but...
I'm sorry, Elizabeth. Thank you for your comments. I've let you overrun a little, a couple minutes already, but...
I'm sorry, I can't hear ya.
I will, I've let you run over a couple more minutes, so do you have a, anything else that you wanna say? I would ask that you step down, because we allow three minutes, and you're at about five and a half minutes right now.
Really?
Yeah.
That's it then?
Alright. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, that actually is, would be the end of the public hearing then. The time is 7:08 PM, and I declare this public hearing closed. At this time, we do have a regular city council meeting. I will tell you that there are two motions on the floor later in the council meeting, depending on how long it takes us to get through the other parts of the council. But the two motions, one will be for us, as recommended, the proposed change in service hours. And the other one will be to discontinue our agreement with Brown Cab and Gulf RFP, whether that's Brown Cab when we go out to RFP or not. But it's, those are the two motions that will be on later in the meeting. You certainly are welcome to stay if you'd like to. You will not be allowed to speak during the council meeting. You might hear some comments from council members if you stick around. If you have Facebook and you wanna get home, you'll be able to see it on Facebook also, because we do Facebook Live there. But it's totally up to you. I'm gonna ask counsel here real quick. I wanna take a five-minute break. Let's, let's try to not interact with the audience, because that will make it even a longer break than we need. So just, just take five minutes, get upstretched. If you have to go to the bathroom, let's do that. Alright, let's get going. Welcome, everybody, to our regular scheduled city council meeting. Today is July 15, 2025. It is 7:17 PM, and I'll call this meeting to order. And as always, we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the light of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and justice for all.
Okay, I'm gonna ask Barb to read the clerk's open meeting statement.
This meeting and all meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
You wanna take roll call, too? Paul, can you ask those people to go somewhere?
Eric.
Besides, or Eric and Jane? Sorry, my hearing is not that good anyway, so... Sorry, if you would, take roll, please.
Sure. Mayor Smith?
Here.
Colin Dijkstra?
Here.
Paul Hagan?
Here.
Eric Helverson?
Here.
Dimitri Martin?
Here.
Paul Mayo?
Here.
Corey Nagel?
Here.
Eric Olson?
Here.
Dave Peterson?
Here.
Scott Porczatski?
Here.
Henry Velicker?
Here.
Ten present, we have a quorum.
And Barb, you wanna start the introduction of department heads for us?
Barb Nowak, City Clerk.
Josh Finch, City Administrator.
Matt Clatt, Airport Manager.
Juliana Stos, Community Economic Development Director.
Stephanie Reif, Finance Director.
Justin Behrens, Director of Public Works.
Laura Colbert, Parks and Rec Director.
Paul Benjwell, Captain, Police Department.
And of course, Josh is in the back room, Josh Warner, RIT. And Eric just stepped out to help us with the crowd control from the library. You have a consent agenda in front of you. Again, just so we understand, the consent agenda is where we take all of those items on the agenda, and we vote with, on those with one motion. Unless you see something on the consent agenda that you would like to discuss individually, and at this time, that would be the time for you to request that it be removed from the consent agenda and put onto the regular agenda. Is there anybody that sees anything on there? If not, I would take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I'm sorry. Motion by Olson, second by Martin, that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Again, say no. Motion carried under regular agenda. Again, I don't think we have any additions or deletions to that, so we would just be looking at approving the regular agenda as printed.
Move to approve the regular agenda.
Second. Motion by Hagan, second by Peterson, that we approve the regular agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Again, say no. Motion carried. Okay, under non-agenda items, announcements, and correspondence, we have a proclamation for Arts Appreciation Month. And I see that Marcy is also here. She's here for another item, too, tonight. I'm gonna go ahead, hopefully my voice holds up, but I'm gonna go, what? I will, yeah. So this is a proclamation, 2025 Arts Appreciation Month, whereas the Wapaka community has a long history of volunteers coming together to promote the arts and arts appreciation. From a few dedicated people working to provide artistic exposure to the community, our arts community has grown to include a very sizable artist community and many different arts organizations and arts-related business of all kinds. Whereas the arts not only provide entertainment, self-expression, and community building, but also create environment, environments that promote innovation, curiosity, and ingenuity. Exposure to many different kinds of artistic expression stimulates the development of creative solutions to both new and old challenges and a thinking of outside-the-box mentality that is so vitally needed in today's world. Whereas the many different arts organizations and arts-related businesses in our area enhance our economy, bring in many tourist dollars, and make our community a more vital, robust, and dynamic place to live and visit, our active arts community is a wonderful human complement to the natural beauty for which we have, we have long been known. Whereas it is more than appropriate to honor and celebrate our dynamic and living, or thriving artistic community with the month of August as Arts Appreciation Month. Now therefore, I, Brian Smith, Mayor of the City of Wapaka, do hereby proclaim the month of August as Arts Appreciation Month. In testimony whereof, I hereunto set my hand in cause to be affixed, the great seal of the City of Wapaka and the great state of Wisconsin this 15th day of July, 2025. Mayor? May I say? May I ask? Yeah, you can. I want to thank you for bringing this forward. You know, I'm the council representative to the Wapaka group, and I know you hear from the network every month, and that's kind of by design a little bit. So you know what's going on. But for the council members, and I know many of you were here in 2017, 2016, the arts group weren't really working together and collaborating. And you go real ahead eight years later and sort of what's going on. So a lot of it's because of your support. I appreciate the council's support, the mayor's support on this. Thank you. Thanks, Henry. Thanks for those comments. All right, next up, actually, this just goes right along with this. So I'll let you make comments about the month, too. But Marcy is here as the reporting on the Wapaka Community Arts Board, WCAB for the Wapaka Area Arts and Cultural Network. Hi, Marcy.
Hi, Brian, Mayor Smith, and everybody. Thank you for having me. I am coming under the auspices, as Henry said, of the Wapaka Area Arts and Culture Network, which is a group of arts-related and culture-related groups that meet periodically, monthly sometimes, not so, not always monthly, but sometimes monthly. And we try to collaborate and plan events that support each other. We cross-promote each other's events. And we just have been working for a pretty long time to help build the arts community here in Wapaka. So I appreciate that group that has created this way that we can keep you guys kind of informed as to what we're all up to. Being that July is right before August, which is Arts Month, the Arts Board is given this month to come and report to you. So I just wanted to let you know what's going on. And I have a little handout for you. It's about Arts on the Square. This year is our 19th Annual Arts on the Square. And I don't know if anyone in the room remembers the first one, which was basically a band on a trailer and a tent and some artists. So we've really, really grown that festival, and it's become a very wonderful collaborative event with the city. This year is also the 20th anniversary of the Wapaka Community Arts Board becoming a nonprofit organization. So this year's festival, as you can see by the image that was created by artist Davette Leonard, is kind of a little circus-y. We love our big top tent that we put up on Fulton Street that you guys approved the street closure for. But because this is our 20th anniversary, we wanted to celebrate in a big way. So we are erecting probably the world's first art Ferris wheel. And we're excited about it. In fact, right now, there are people at the Arts Hub painting a banner. And the theme they're doing tonight is The Chain of Lakes. And interwoven into there is the history of the Menominee people. And it's a really beautiful, I mean, all the banners are gonna be works of art. They're six by eight feet in size. Some of them are being made by local artists that have worked with the Arts Board over years. Some of them are being done in workshops like tonight that people signed up for to work with an artist. And others are just being done in the public at the Summer Nights concerts. And we've had lots of people come up to that table and paint on those banners. So we're super excited. I hope I don't start crying because it's pretty emotional to just see the whole community coming together to celebrate the arts. So what you have in front of you is our save the date card. Participation week starts August 10, which is a Sunday. And there are events every day. Sunday on the town square, we have the Central Wisconsin Symphony Orchestra coming to do a participatory percussion event. Kids are doing an art bike parade. We've got a big jam session. We've been using the same songbook since the Polar Biscuits were here in town. It's a really cool mix of music that probably we all remember from when we were younger. And then there's gonna be banner painting for the Ferris wheel. And so then that launches the week. This year, we also have an additional thing during Arts Week in that we're having some events happen down in what we're calling the Shine Space. I don't know how many of you have seen the sculpture that we created with the foundry, and it was installed down by Rotary Park. And it created this beautiful circle that just makes you want to have a picnic or play music or, you know, have fun in that circle. So we've got, the senior center is coming and doing line dancing. We've got yoga. We've got the Historical Society doing a talk on the rails under the street, how they were used to create that sculpture. The foundry actually took those rails that Justin saved for us and melted them down and created the sculptures. So there's just a lot of activity happening down in that space, as well as on the town square. Then on Friday night, we've got the street dance. We have Copper Box this year. I don't know how many people have heard them, but they're pretty phenomenal. We're pretty sure we've talked them into playing a song from the Ferris wheel as it spins. It's not 100% confirmed yet, so don't hold me to it. And then we have the Ferris wheel, which will be installed during Friday. We're gonna put all of the paintings on the Ferris wheel. And then it will run for two and a half hours on Friday night and three and a half hours on Saturday. So it's gonna be a really special Arts on the Square this year. We're really happy to be able to offer all of this to the community. Everything is free, except for the Ferris wheel, you gotta pay five bucks. So that's kind of what the Arts Board has been up to. And then I just wanted to make an announcement because I heard somebody on the radio say that I was gonna talk about the Arts Hub tonight. I don't know where that came from. But just to give you an update, we have purchased a building from the school system. Thank you to many people in city council and government for helping us make that happen. We purchased the building July 1. It's the old CISA Building, 515 School Street. If anybody would like a personal tour, I'd be happy to give it to you. We're gonna be doing renovations. We're using Strongwood to do our remodeling. Our plan is to start, I think they're gonna start demolition next week, at the end of the week. And then we hope to move in by January to offer services. Obviously, we have a capital campaign going, but this just reminds me of, I think it was 2019 when I came to the council with my brother to talk about the possibility of starting an art and music school at the old St. Mary's. And it was recommended that we do a feasibility study, which we did. And we found out we were not able to use that money. So good thing we didn't do that campaign and then end up holding the bag, right? So what we did was we just started doing the program with the generosity of the First United Methodist Church. We were able to have space to start our programming. We started out with eight piano students, and now we have 200 students a week. So 115 or so of those are music students, the rest are art students. We're running this program year-round. It's filling a huge need in the community. We have waiting lists of kids to get in, and that's why we have purchased the building because we don't have room to do the programming that the community wants us to do. We're excited to be next door to the Rec Center. And we're just excited. I feel like we don't have a YMCA here, but we have the Rec Center and the Arts Hub. And somehow, that's more unique. And it's really reflects Wapaka, how we kind of have the Wapaka way here. We do things our own way. And so we're really, really excited. The Methodist Church launched us, we're moving on. And if anybody wants that tour, just holler, I'd be happy to take you through. So thanks for your time.
Thank you, Marcy. Good luck with Arts Week. All right, next up, just informational on page 80 through 82. That's Wapaka Area Fire District's report from Chief Jake Waller. That's just informational in your packet. If at all, we're gonna move the department head's report to the end, close to the end of the meeting. So we'll see how the rest of the night goes before we do that. Otherwise, if we're not able to do the department head reports, obviously, they have reports in the packet that you can read at your leisure. So let's move on to public input, since I missed that. Public input is for non-agenda items. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the council on a non-agenda item, please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record. For, or limit your time to three minutes or less. Any public input? Council, any public input? Staff, any public input? All right. I think we had a little bit of public input today already. Under new business, then, we'll go right to the recommendation to reduce shared ride taxi service hours. And Stephanie, you want to just summarize again? Now, that is in your packet, the summary of those hours. But I'll just have Stephanie go through that with you again. And Steph, with that, can you just explain to them how we came up with those hours?
Yeah. I know we've talked about this a lot over the past month and just recently, an hour ago. So just to reiterate, as part of our ongoing efforts to reduce the growing deficit in the Transin Fund, we are recommending a reduction in shared ride taxi service hours beginning August 1 through the end of the year. This was in very close collaboration with WISDOT. We've been working with our P rep, as well as our current funding reps, on how to come to this conclusion and what we can do moving forward, as well as Brown Cab. Brown Cab actually suggested these hours of reduction. So we didn't just come up with these on our own. They were definitely recommended regarding the hours that were not utilized as much. So it just didn't really make sense to have those hours kept open if we were not seeing a lot of rides during those hours. So that is really how we came up with this, this new service hour profile. So we are recommending that, due to ongoing funding challenges and the substantial increase in the required local contribution, that we recommend approving the proposed reduction in Wapaka taxi service hours as outlined above.
Okay, thanks, Steph. Just so we do this in an organized fashion here, if you want to talk on that, any item that's on this. And again, understand that we're just talking about reducing the service hours for the rest of 2025. If you have comments or questions, please raise your hand and let me call on you. Let me make sure that we don't have one person hogging the whole show here. I'll try to go through the whole list here of each member to make sure that everybody has the opportunity. Then we'll go back and call on people for a second time if they'd like to. Anybody want to start? Dave, go ahead.
By reducing these hours, how much are we actually saving?
We're looking at...
A dollar amount.
Yep, we're looking at approximately $20,000 for the remainder of the year. Not quite 20,000, but approximately 20,000.
Good. Anybody else? Dimitri, go ahead.
I don't understand why we can't just say that this is how much money we can afford to spend and let them figure out the hours. Why do we have to mandate specific hours?
That's a really good question. We can't...
Can I just stop you just for a second? And Justin from Brown Cab is actually here tonight. He's in the back there. So if you have specific questions that Stephanie can't answer, Justin said he's available to answer any questions you have. So Steph, feel free to call on Justin if that's something...
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
So during the RFP process, we do go through offering a certain amount of hours and then the amount of money that we can subsidize. So as far as the service hours and how many vehicles are out on the road, that is really something that we have to work closely with Brown Cab on. Hence why we're going to the reduction in service hours. But as far as them figuring it out, because we subsidize and we partner with them for the service, I don't know if that's really an option. I guess if Justin, if you have any more things to say...
Would you introduce yourself to Justin?
Absolutely.
Yeah, it is.
My name's Justin Running. I'm with Brown Cab. I'm down in Barocwa, Wisconsin. We operate the system here. To your question, we can manipulate the hours within side of the stated open and close time that the city put in their initial RFP. But we are not allowed to alter the starting time or the ending time without the city saying so. So that's why the, for this to happen, that's why you had to have the public hearing. It's changing the fundamental structure of what your initial procurement was. So the city sets the hours, total hours and the operational hours. And then they set the fares. All fare classes are set by the city. We don't get to set the fares. And then our job is to provide you with a dollar amount that we can provide per hour, which utilizes, like, we figure out what of all of our fixed costs are gonna be to provide your service, divide that out amongst the total amount of hours that were asked for in the RFP. And then we provide that service. So there's, there's, there's a lot we can do, but there's a lot we can't do. And changing the fundamental open and close time of the service is not something that the provider can do. We also can't change fares.
Okay, that makes sense. So this is what you would do if you could do it on your own, but you need us to do it because...
If I were in financial difficulty and I need to make hard cuts, these are the cuts I would make if I had the ability to make it.
Gotcha.
I don't... Any cut's tough. You heard the group earlier. But if you're, you know, in the situation that the city's in, I understand. I told the mayor, and I'll tell you all, I'm actually the mayor of a small town southwest Wisconsin also, and I understand budgetary difficulties. This is something that, in our opinion, is the best case for what you're trying to achieve.
For the rest of 2020.
For the rest of 2025.
Yeah.
It will have negative implications for a few people, and they spoke tonight, but that's...
Thank you, Justin. If you don't mind just standing there, yeah. Henry, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Justin, for being here because I think it's really important for you to represent our vendor for this. There was a comment made about riders wanting the service and the ability for some not to pay and have a differential rate for other classes. Do you have a system, another play, another community where they actually have, you know, more of a handicap rate and then a rate for a... I'm not finding the right words. But, you know, an able-bodied that doesn't need the level of service that you would provide a typical...
There's typically four rate classes. Adult, student, senior citizens, and individuals with disabilities. There's typically four rate classes of adult, student, senior citizens and individuals with disabilities. Those are the four rate classes. Now, a senior rate typically always aligns with the, the rate for a disabled individual, but it doesn't have to. So a senior being somebody who's over designated age, that isn't handicap. So that is a possibility. You could amend the fare ordinance, your, your, you know, your fare structure, have a different senior rate. The other thing and, and uh, as the, the comment I talked about with the vets home out there, that's outside the city limits. You can change the outside city limit fare significantly if you would like. And that's, that is a, I don't want to go off topic, so if I do-
I will.
Fares is the other thing, and we just raised fares, was it at the end of last year? That is certainly another option that can be looked at to try to help some stopgap here in the next little bit. So um, from what Henry's talking about, having some of those other fares, but even fare adjustment across all fares, you know, you've got 40,000 rides approximately budgeted for this year, so every dollar you increase, it is $40,000 more in revenue, assuming you don't lose any ridership as a result of the fare increase, which it'll dip and then come back. It's not what we typically see.
Yeah, I think along with that, when you're talking about different fare rates too, I think Stephanie said at the last meeting that we talked about too, that, you know, a good portion of our revenue does come from people that are disabled and seniors.
70%.
70%. So even if you have adults and students at a $10 rate, which I think it's, what is it, $7? Can't remember.
Adults, $5.
$5, okay. So, but the, most of the people are paying $3.50 for their, for their ride because they are the seniors and the disabled that are in that position. So, you know, that's a tough one there. Henry, are you on the same topic or can you-
Um, well, I don't, I think Paul probably is hanging up for, for me.
Thanks for helping me, Henry.
Well, you didn't see his hand. It was only up like this.
Paul, go ahead.
Do you have a, do you have a sense either approximate or otherwise the number of people that would be, or riders that would be affected by this um, change in hours?
Not with me tonight. I brought a pile of numbers, but that isn't one of the ones that I brought along. Stephanie, I don't know if Amanda shared with, that with you in the initial, there's a lot of data that-
Like how many?
Yeah, or trips or, I, I mean, I'm just trying to get a handle on, on the effect of this change in some manner, I guess.
I don't have it up. Can I come back to this?
Sure.
Okay.
Uh, let me keep going around, Henry, as I said. So uh, Scott, go ahead.
Steph, can you remind-
She's looking something up now. Can you, so can you ask something else to somebody else? Scott, she's looking something up.
Oh, all right. Well, then I'll ask-
Do you want to wait?
I can wait. It's kind of a money question, I guess.
Okay. All right. Somebody else that doesn't have a question. Stephanie maybe has a question for Justin. Go ahead.
I actually just, well, never. Was, were we over budget last year on this?
We weren't.
So I, I, I wasn't able to make the last meeting. I'm confused as to why we are now having to talk about it right now if we were over budget last year and why we, why we couldn't be talking about this during budgeting workshops when we spend a lot of time talking about budgeting. And, you know, maybe these are the hours at the start of 2026. I don't know. Maybe we look at fares. I don't know. But two weeks' time, it's still summer. We have people, I, this is really hard to, for me to support. Um, again, I wasn't at the last meeting, so I know I missed the closed session discussion, but I, I'm, I, I guess I'm just a little bit confused as to why we have to make a decision on this right now. Um, I get going out to RFP, that makes sense. Um, but I guess that's, that's my question. I don't, I don't, I guess I don't know who that's for. That's just kind of a general question.
Ask the question again, because I think I can answer it, but-
Why, why do we have, why didn't we have this discussion a year ago, I guess? I, I guess that's my question.
And the only answer I can give to you is, Cory, as soon as I found out about it, I let you know. So uh, you know, sometimes things work in slow motion and we have auditors that audit our books and it became aware of us what, I became aware of it by looking at the preliminary audit for the year. And that's why it's being brought forward. Is it, should it have been done sooner? Probably, but it's too late to go back and, and say that.
Can I just follow up? And I, I don't want to monopolize the time, but we did finish in the black last year as a city.
Well, yes.
Yes.
You mean overall?
Overall.
Yes.
So we, we were over budget on this item, but not overall in terms of budgeting. So we were over budget on what is a very valuable service. But I, I, I also get that they're all valuable services, so I-
Yeah, yeah. We were lucky that we had a very productive last couple of years in the economic uh, department where we were able to generate a plus. You're right, to be in the black. And we were able to sustain these losses because of that. I agree. Also, in 2024, we actually had a fund balance of about $74,000 in the taxi fund balance. So we had a positive number in there, uh, and we used that 74,000 up and then went into the red because it cost us, what, 118,000, I think it was, around 118,000. So it didn't cost us the full 118. We had 74, about, again, I-
75,500.
75,500. I was close. Uh, in that fund balance. And part of that, and Justin can attest to this too, is, is that as we went through COVID, COVID uh, did some not good things, but we were getting extra COVID ARPA funds because of COVID. And then those funds dried up and the cost did not dry up. If anything, the, the, the cost is, is Stephanie has put on her, on the report, what was it, like up about 48%? Is that?
Yeah, so-
45%.
Yeah. In 2021, we were getting 72% of this fund was subsidized through federal and state funding. And now we're down to 54%. That's a pretty big, pretty big gap.
Yeah, I, I get your comments about you're expected to do something. I mean, we've, we've, we have been talking about it for about over a month now, quite honestly. But I appreciate your point. Steph, do you have an answer for Paul?
Uh, yeah, I do.
Yeah.
So looking at the total rides, I'm just looking at, I'm, I pulled uh, some data for seniors, disabled and agency disabled. And in '24, the total rides for those categories was 40,734 rides, which totals about 79% of the total ratio of riders. To break that down further, seniors were 8,145 rides, disabled category was 15,078 rides and the agency um, was 4,861. So that's, the total rides was 40,000. And then breaking those down, adding those all up, those three categories encompasses 28,084 rides.
That answer your question?
That was, actually did not answer my question.
Ask it again, because I, yeah, I didn't think it did. So, yeah, go ahead.
What I was trying to get at is what is the approximate amount of people who, when we cut these hours will be affected? Is there any breakdown of that data?
We don't know that, to be honest with you. Justin can attest to this a little bit more when-
I didn't take anecdotal at this point.
Yeah, when people are picked up, they are, we don't really get their names. The names that are listed are not always accurate, or there's a number, um, or there's a Sherry and question mark. So we don't know who those said riders are. We just know what category that they fall under, if that answers any more of your question.
Well, and I-
I don't know how many people in general.
I think what will help to answer that question without being able to give you the exact statistics is this is a recommendation using the Wisconsin Department of Transportation and Brown Cab to come up with cost savings for the remainder of the year. So they felt like the ridership was a lot less during that time. Obviously, it's going to affect some people. There's no doubt about it. So I think that's the best answer.
That's where it's close enough.
Yeah. Scott, you wanted to ask Stephanie?
Well, in your discussion with Cory, of all reasons, you answered my dollar question.
Okay.
I'm good.
Okay. Uh, I'm still waiting. There's a few others if they want to ask. I know Colin's uh, got his brain moving here, but you're good? Okay.
I'm now.
Eric, go ahead.
I guess I got to throw it out here too. So rather than cut hours, is there an option to do a fare rate increase for the remainder of the year? If we went up 50 cents across the board with the number of ridership that's over the 20,000 we're saving?
To kind of go back to Cory's point, we, we looked at this last year. This is where we came up with that fare increase to try to help close that gap. When Aaron and I were evaluating where we were sitting with the budget compared to expenditures in the middle of last year, knowing that there was going to be an issue, that's when we had done that. So we actually increased the fares in '24 as well as in '25. And we're still seeing the-
I guess just talking with other people around this, our rates are incredibly low.
Can you pull the microphone up?
I'm sorry. Talking with some other people over the past couple of weeks, that our fare rates are incredibly low compared to a lot of other communities.
Right? I, uh, I would say that, that is an option. I don't think it's going to make up the $20,000 that you're looking for. And quite honestly, we maybe should be looking at both. Fare rate increases and reduction in hours, um, to try and make up as much as we can by the end of the year. I mean, and I'm not sure, Justin probably knows or Stephanie knows, if we do want to do fare increases, I think we have to have another public hearing.
Yes.
So we could be well into October before we could do any fare increases for this year. So, yeah. Eric, go ahead.
How many vehicles do you have going during the hours that we would be keeping? And how many vehicles do you have that, I mean, is it the same amount of vehicles in the hours that are not going to be there anymore?
No. So there's more hours on throughout the course of the day. So, and that's kind of driven by, you know, your RFP had a template that said we want this many vehicles on these certain hours, but that to the point earlier, that's where we can flex. So in the evening, right now, I believe I'd have to, I did not have the schedule with me, but I believe after 6 o'clock, it's either 6 or 8, we go down to one vehicle. So that's partly why, you know, when you cut out that amount of hours, you're, you're only cutting the one revenue hour per hour. If you take a middle of the day where there's four vehicles on and you cut one hour, you're actually cutting four revenue hours. Makes sense?
Yeah, yeah. So I, I would imagine you only had one vehicle um, in the, in the later hours uh, for the, the bar crowd, right?
Right.
Yeah. So not a ton of savings there then, probably if you were to, yeah. Okay, that answers my question.
I do have something that just came to my mind. To save, to leave the hours the way they were and save the quote unquote, around 20,000, do we have a sense of our budget standing at this point that we may be, have budget saving somewhere else or over revenue, revenue sources that are higher? Have we looked at that? I'm, I'm trying to find a way to, basically another idea to keep the hours the same for, for balance. Is there any sense of that in our staff meetings or?
Well-
Or do we want, don't want to go down that road?
Let me answer that by saying this. We are having a good year. We probably will end up in the black again. I mean, we're only into July, so we don't know, but building permits are up. You know, we've done a good job of, of uh, of finding revenue in the Economic Development Department, uh, you know, in community development area. So revenue so far looked like they'll be up and we might end up in the black. I, I would question, are you truly being fiscally responsible by allowing this to continue now that you know about it? It's not, certainly not your fault. We're bringing it to your attention because this is running in the red and we figured you'd want to know about it and we came with some, uh, we came with some recommendations to try and reduce that loss. I, I do think too, you know, we have to keep in mind, uh, when you start talking about things like this, that, you know, we are covered by levy limits, so it's not real easy to just say, okay, we're going to add $100,000 to our budget to, to cover it. And we, we only see that dollar amount going up under the current contract, but that's all, that's the next question here. We're just talking about these hours here. So um, we're doing the best we can, being responsible to the city residents by bringing this forward to you. You can do, as a council, you can do anything you want. You're not going to offend me. You're not going to offend staff. We'll do what, what you want us to do, but we believe this is the best answer. Okay? Anybody else that wants to? Colin, you haven't spoke yet, so if you have-
No, I haven't. Um-
You usually come out of the dark.
Yeah. Somebody advised me recently, be the last person to talk, so the first. Monday through Thursday and Friday evenings, you've got it till 8:00 PM. It seems like some of our constituents work until that hour. I don't know how a taxi works. If somebody works till 8, you pick, can you pick up somebody at 8? Uh, if we extend the hour 10 minutes, is that worthwhile to anybody who gets off at 8:00 PM? And I don't know who I'm at, I guess I'm looking at you, Justin, but I don't know who's, and if we can even change an hour that by 10 minutes and if it's worthwhile to do so, but it's-
Can I, can I answer?
Yeah, please, please.
Part of it real quick?
Yeah.
Okay. So these are the recommendations. I think if you wanted to change, now I got to be careful here, because I want, I think this is the right thing. But if you wanted to change the hours, I think we could work with Justin to, to adjust these hours a little bit. So if you feel that these are too limited, but remember, anytime you add minutes, you're reducing the amount of uh, savings we have.
Understood.
Yeah, okay.
So to answer your question, we're only allowed to, so we get audited every year by the Wisconsin DOT and they audit the, the city's finances and then they look at our driver's logs, timekeeping, all that sort of thing. We're only allowed 15 minutes past the scheduled end time. So say your service shuts down at 8 o'clock and we have a driver that goes and picks up uh, uh, two fares at 7:59 and they go drop them off and by the time they get back, it's 8:30. Say it's 8 o'clock is what time the end time is. We'll get disallowed those 15 minutes and then we don't get paid for them. And I don't want to make this about money on my end, but I just want you to, to answer your question, that's the, the answer. We can only get, we can only bill you up to 15 minutes past-
The allotted hours.
Or we can pay the drivers for up to 15 minutes past the allotted hours.
Understood.
But, and I, if I may, I don't think, you know, there's people that's jobs end at 8, 9, 10, and that's kind of the end of the workday. So, you know, just, so you, I had, before I, the meeting, I talked to some of our staff and, and they were really saying, you know, there's a lot of people that get off work between 8 and 10 o'clock that will be negatively impacted by this. So I just wanted to make that point. I don't think it's just that 8 o'clock hour. I, but to the mayor's point, I think when we look at the amount of people that are impacted, and I don't like impacting anybody and I know nobody in this room wants to impact an individual, but it's not a lot of rides. And I wish tonight wasn't the vote, but it is, but to be able to get, I think it was Eric's point or maybe it was Paul, I can get you how many trips per hour, but I can't tell you- I can get you how many trips per hour, but I can't tell you specifically how many citizens are taking those trips. Does that make sense? I can't tell you that Stephanie's taking ten of them, but I can tell you that there's twenty trips being taken in those hours, but that doesn't help us tonight. I apologize for not.
I was just specifically interested in trips that, that were going to, that were taken.
Paul, you have to use your microphone.
I was specifically interested in the trips during the time of the hours we were going to cut.
Regardless of how tonight goes, I'll get those to you.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Any other comments? Dimitri, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I'm all, I'm all for trying to save money um, in terms of, you know, not running the taxis so that people can go to the bars and drink. Um, that's something that they don't necessarily have to do. And, and if we need to save money, then that seems like a logical place. But if there's people that are working until ten PM at night and they, and they're relying on this, um, I think it makes sense to continue the hours up until ten o'clock and, and to not um, reduce it down to eight. And I also heard from at least one constituent that she needs rides uh, to work uh, before seven. And so I, I'd be more supportive of keeping the six thirty AM time um, and not, not changing that to seven. But I understand that we also need to achieve some sort of, of fiscal uh, responsibility. So I'm just wondering if there's a way that we could keep those work hours, but maybe offset those savings with some increase in fares to like the adult rate. Um, maybe even to the um, you know, the children's uh, rate. I don't know what sorts of fare increases that would take to achieve, to offset those hours. Do you have a, a rough sense of what that might be?
I was doing math while somebody else was talking. And if I took the remaining months of this year with a basis of forty thousand trips, that leans, we have sixteen thousand three hundred and thirty-three trips left to be taken this year across all types of transportation. So the math works backwards from there. If you increased every fare a dollar, you generate sixteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-one, thirty-three dollars. If you raised it fifty cents, it'd be assume we all can do math because I didn't do that, but it's eight thousand and some change. You know what I mean? So every dollar you increase it adds sixteen thousand dollars. Now, as I said earlier, sometimes fare increases do have a, will cause a reduction in ridership. Because a lot of the riders that are utilizing these services are on extremely fixed incomes. And they, they kind of budget, just like we all do, right? They, they've kind of got their, their year figured out. If we raise it two dollars a ride, which is certainly doable when you look at, Eric mentioned, you know, there's, there's other systems that have higher fares than Wapaka does. Um, but it's a weight thing, right? I don't envy the council at all for having to make these decisions. I mean, it impacts real people and it's, it's populations in your community that don't have a lot of other options. So, but raising it a dollar would generate you sixteen thousand more dollars.
If we were to be able to start it right away.
August first.
August first. But we can.
Well, right. So take thirty days off of that, three, choke off three thousand trips, it'd be thirteen thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars essentially.
Thank you. Yeah. Anybody else have any other questions? Comments? Oh, Paul, sorry.
You know, I, I, I don't want to be dramatic, dramatic here, but um, if we cut the hours on Friday and Saturday night from two thirty AM back to eight, if we have one person decide that they're going to drive home impaired, gets in an accident, the cost to, I guess, society in general will be certainly more than the twenty thousand dollars that we're looking to save here.
So there is, there is an option for those people. You know, we're really looking at trying to be not redundant in the things that we, you know, if it's being offered somewhere else, we feel like it's time to make sure that we work together with other organizations. Uh, now, as one individual explained tonight, there are only really two establishments in the area that take advantage of it, but the Tav- Tavern League of Wisconsin, which almost every one of the, they should because of the, I, I know this from being a, a former establishment owner, but uh, they actually, it doesn't cost them any money. And uh, you can participate in that that shared ride or safe ride with the Tavern League of Wisconsin. You have to sign up for it and you basically get a voucher then to pay for that. Okay? Um, and so we need, education needs to get out there for the other establishments. If they belong to the Tavern League, which I think the majority do, uh, and if they don't, they should sign up for it. It's minimal cost, really. Uh, they can get that done. Uh, so that would cover what you're talking about, the people that, and this can happen at at noon. The Tavern League of Wisconsin will uh, you can use that in that case.
Who actually provides that?
Yeah, that's a good question. So R and R, if, if we don't have the taxi service available, the only one that's really available in our community that would be able to offer that would be R and R.
I'd also like to just make a comment on that. I reached out to multiple local um, bars and restaurants and there is definitely more than two. So there are many bars and restaurants that participate in that program. And how it does work is if they cannot get a driver from R and R or whatever said service provider, they can take one of their um, sober employees and they can bring that person home and they will get reimbursed from the Tavern League. And I, I personally now have of people who have utilized that and they have gotten reimbursed. The bars have gotten reimbursed. So that is, that statement that should be, unfortunately, is not true.
Yeah, I have to tell you, again, as a former establishment or family establishment owning a place, the last thing we want is our patrons to get picked up for drunk driving. So we'll do anything to make sure that they get home safe.
And there's.
Or not get drunk.
There are seventeen listed. I mean, I have it open right now. There's seventeen establishments listed in Wapaka County.
Thank you.
Henry, the question for Justin.
Art, we had a precipitous drop in fare revenue. I, I, I thought I had here. It was like fifty thousand dollars from twenty-three to twenty-four.
Will you pull your mic?
I'm sorry. We had a, a drop of fifty thousand dollars and the fare revenue is an important leg to all this. And you know, we kind of have a sense maybe of why that is, but I heard a comment from the young, uh, the younger man at the Firehouse Apartments where he speculated it was because of delays in getting a ride and that people just blow it off. Um, your contract is very short with the city, two pages, but it references the RFP. Is there uh, efficiency requirements in the RFP that got to be met, like time pickup and those kinds of things?
Yeah.
Are you meeting those?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, there's points in the day where there certainly is a first of the month typically during the day when people get, you know, when, when folks that are on like disability income get their checks, it tends to create delays in the service. However, when you take and you look at the average of the month, we're well within the service parameters. But there are periods throughout the month, typically a couple times a month where maybe a huge glut of ridership comes in and you have to just kind of work through that. Now, our staff should be, and I believe they are sharing that information with the riders, saying, hey, you know, we've, we're just slammed right now. We're, we're running forty minutes. We'll be there in forty minutes. Um, so yes, to answer your question short, we are within the parameters. Long answer is there are times, if you took an hour by hour look, that you would see we would exceed that.
So just to follow up, what do you think is the reason for a fifty thousand dollar drop? It's, it's a third of the fare revenue. I mean, that is significant in one year. And one year is not a trend and we can build it back because I think the vendor has a responsibility to help advertise. I think there's an advertising budget uh, that you are getting subsidized, reimbursed for. So to promote the Tavern League and all these other things and the existence of your taxi, you, you can do that and you're required to. So why, it just, it just boggles me that we're down on, that's a lot of money.
Right. When you look at the ridership trends from twenty-nine, I went back to twenty nineteen today before I came in here and it's fifty-one thousand trips in twenty nineteen. Then twenty twenty, we went to thirty-five thousand trips, which is very explainable and understandable why that happened. Well, if you take an average of four dollars a trip, times the amount of trips that were lost in that period of time, that's substantial. Twenty-one, it was forty thousand. Twenty-two was forty-five. And then again in twenty-three, we did drop down five thousand trips.
Hmm.
Twenty-four, we were at about thirty-nine thousand and we're on track through quarter one of twenty-five to be at about forty thousand, but it could be thirty-eight, it could be forty.
Mm-hmm.
Shakes out. Um, twenty-two is the odd year. It went, it jumped significantly in tw- from twenty-one to twenty-two and then went back in twenty-three to what it was in twenty-one. And I can't tell you what caused that dip.
Okay, so we did a fair increase last year, so it can't really, does that explain part of it to your point? You think some of it is?
Little bit. It's not much, to the point I think that I meant earlier, and this is the unfortunate part about impacting services like this. A lot of the folks that utilize these services don't have another opportunity for service. So as hard as it is to stand here and say, though, though maybe you'll lose some ridership, it isn't because they're going to jump onto another mode of transportation. It's because they can't afford to ride as much. So they're going to change what they're doing. Maybe they won't go to the hairdresser that extra time, maybe whatever will happen. Um, but it's not another opportunity that's happening. The other big difference was twenty-four, you were out, or you went out in twenty-three for twenty-four for an RFP and you saw a significant increase in your hourly rate in twenty-four over twenty-three. The reason for that was your last procurement happened prior to COVID and we're all aware of the inflation that happened as a result. Or as, I'm sick and tired of using COVID as an excuse for bad things happening, but that's what happened in the, the financial world in transit. Vehicles that were thirty thousand before twenty nineteen are now sixty-five thousand. People that would work for ten dollars an hour in twenty eighteen now want eighteen dollars an hour. So that's, there, there's a reason why you saw that significant jump, but that doesn't put more money in your pocket. I mean, if the system wouldn't have had that big financial increase from a budgetary standpoint, we'd be standing here trying to explain why we can only provide half the hours you're contracted for because we can't hire people to do the job. So that's.
Thank, uh, thank you, Justin. Henry, hopefully that answered your question. Steph, I got a quick question for you. Uh, one of the handouts, th- this is in your packet. I, I have a paper copy of it, but this is in your packet. Is that current, is that currently happening?
This is from um, the Wapaka County Aging and Disability Resource Center. Um, so that is the um, ADRC that somebody had mentioned. I don't have it in the packet. This was a suggestion Barb gave me before the council meeting and I didn't do it.
Well, let me, let me just, let me just go through it real quick. Sorry, because I want to. Uh, so this is already in existence in our, in our county. So they have what's called the Wapaka County Chance Transportation Program. And this is in existence right now. It's services, residents of Wapaka County who are age sixty or older or individuals with a disability, regardless of age, who do not receive Medicaid, are eligible to use the service. Okay? And they will help with doctor and healthcare appointments, dental appointments, grocery and essential shopping, hair appointments, personal appointments, elderly nutrition program, uh, dining, bistro, sixty, whatever that means for sure. Uh, you can schedule by calling a phone number, so it's still the phone number type thing. It's not the app thing, you know, that some people seem to be afraid of. Uh, the ride copays. Our in-town trips are two dollars and fifty cents. County trips are five fifty. Out of county trip, under a hundred miles is eleven dollars. Out of county trips, a hundred, two hundred miles is sixteen fifty. Out of county trips, two, greater than two hundred miles are sixty dollars and fifty cents. Uh, and then additional fee for medical transport. So if they need, uh, you know, if they're, uh, have a handicap, then they would have to pay additional loan. Uh, to do this, and this is why, this is part of the reason why I think there is a uh, less ridership because of, of this program getting out there more. But this is the deterrent to it and it doesn't seem like it should be, but this is the deterrent to it. To schedule a ride, you have to have the appointment date and time, the approximate time, length of the appointment, the facility name and address, and the additional information for the driver. And this must be provided three business days ahead of time. So you, the advantage, of course, one of the advantages of Brown Cab, you can call and the cab's going to be there in ten minutes. But if you're going to go to the doctor's appointment, you're probably going to know three days ahead. When you're out of milk, you're probably going to know three days ahead of time that you better go to the grocery store. You know, so there is options out there and there's other options coming, you know? So again, I know we're just talking about the hours, but I want to make sure that you know that, again, we're trying to, we're trying to make this work uh, and be responsible to our, all of our citizens, not just the taxi cab riders. We're trying to make this responsible to all our drivers in our community. Uh, all our, our, all our residents that live in our community. Okay? And, you know, as we dig into it more, you know, as we talk about RFP for next year, we're finding more and more things every day that, that maybe we are duplicating and we need to, we need to assess those and see if that's what's right. I don't think any of us want to, want to reduce services. That's, you know, that's one thing that I have always praised us on making sure that uh, we continue our services, but at, at, at a level that's almost three hundred thousand dollars over two years, that needs to be, we need to discuss that and figure out a way to reduce that. There's no doubt about that. Um, so with that said, anybody else? Corey?
Does this pick up non-city residents, the service?
So the service is available to city residents um, and within the city limits of one mile. So you can go one mile outside the city limits, which is defined in the RFP process. So it'll serve the city plus one mile and up to five miles when volume allows.
Okay.
So.
Are those, are, are, are those riders paying?
More.
They are?
Yes. So the mileage rate is, so if you're out of town every mile, the tra- the vehicle has to travel is two dollars and seventy-five cents a mile.
Okay.
So that's when you'd heard during the public comments, some folks were saying their, their ride was eleven dollars. It's the adult fare, so it was five dollars plus two fifty a mile for whatever the amount of miles they were traveling, two seventy-five.
Okay. Thank you.
Again, taxi service does not end at the city boundaries. And, you know, the city is supplying this. Even with them paying extra, it's not covering our costs. Our costs are higher than what, what, what their subsidy, or what they're paying for.
Can I just follow up then? Why don't we have an agreement or why can't we seek an agreement with some of the townships like we do for library, like we do for park and rec to, I mean, their people are using the service and we're bleeding. I mean, I, I, sure, I preach to the choir here, but you know, it's.
Yeah, no.
It's a problem.
We've talked about it, you know? Um, but one of the answers is to try and work through the county. And then that does encompass all of the townships. Now, don't get me wrong, if we work to the county and the county does do a shared ride program, Brown Cab will be probably uh, one of them that, that will will give an offer, a, a bid for that, you know? So you might end up with the same service that you have, but it would be covered countywide. Uh, and that doesn't, that doesn't mean that we're still not going to have to come up with some money to make that work within the county. And it's probably going to be more than ten thousand dollars. But what we're doing then is getting rid of all of these duplicates that are happening within the community and, and being uh, what we're doing is, is we're being, making sure that what we're paying is, is not being duplicated anywhere else, I guess is my point. I do get your point, Corey, too, that if we had no other option, we should be heading out to the townships and saying, hey, you guys need to, if you, if you want us to be working in your townships, you should be helping us. And I have to tell you too, I, I, I held my breath, but I have to tell you this. I know it's on Facebook Live, but we had Tammy Cervatius in here tonight. She is the Commanet of the Wisconsin Veterans Home. We had a sweet agreement for the veterans out there. We had a sweet agreement for the veterans out there, and she cut it. As soon as she became the Commanet of the Wisconsin Veterans Home, she cut that out. And although they do pay, for people that cannot afford it, they do pay for those people, but that's it. And so our ridership at the Wisconsin Veterans Home went way down, so that could be a good explanation for that part. Because our veterans out there, they don't wanna sit in those rooms all day long. You know, a lot of them, even if they're disabled, they still like coming down and going out to eat and go shopping, go to the grocery stores and stuff like that. But they are on a fixed income like a lot of the people. And if they're, you know, if they have income that, that it shows that they have enough income, the Veterans Home is no longer paying for that. So again, I, I, I appreciate everybody that came here tonight. I'm not sure that I appreciated her comments. I guess that's my point. Henry.
We're looking at a shortfall of about twenty thousand dollars to, uh, you know, basically keep the service hours through the year. We're looking to, uh, put an RFP out. That all makes sense. But there is a possibility that this community might not have a service. Or it's now county-run, and there's gonna be a different service product and everything like that, and it could be better, it could be worse, or it could be about the same. It seems to me that we have in our past found twenty thousand dollars for any number of things when it was operational, uh, plant and equipment. And I know we have a fund balance policy we did really good last year. And is there, if there is, get into the final quarter, um, look at our current budget and do a budget amendment if we project, and we'll find that twenty thousand dollars, and it won't have to be out of fund balance potentially. So I guess I'm sort of, there's been other comments, is if, if we're gonna change something, we should e- bring the process along to the public. Mayor, you've known the staff has beaten back misinformation on this. You heard a gentleman came loaded to bear, and it was so great to see him kinda stand down to listen. Is this something the Public Engagement Committee could be involved in or should be involved in to help get input, uh, get leverage on the Veterans Home? You know, maybe support the staff in your efforts to try to come up with your RFP, that kinda thing?
May I say something?
You know, it's, to me, it seems like twenty thousand dollars is a lot of money, but in, in a, in a oper- in a, an organization, I don't know, is there combined funds fifteen million dollars? I, to me, it seems like a very light lift to just keep everything the way it is and start bringing people along to the idea, there's other i- the options. We're gonna try to keep it going, but you know, we may not be successful. And then it's, you know, versus dumping this on people like it is right now. I had a different thought about this before the meeting, uh, and, and some of the comments I heard kinda changed my mind on it.
Okay, Stephanie wanted to respond to you here, Henry, so.
Um, just to reiterate, it's not just twenty thousand dollars. We're looking at a deficit of more like a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. So the twenty thousand is just with what we would save towards that deficit that we're looking at for the remainder of the year. So it's far more than twenty thousand dollars that we're looking for.
So let's use the number you're proposing, a hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Can you grab that microphone? Oh, I'm sorry. Let's use the number you're proposing, a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. We, we're gonna have a, a likely, we're above our fund balance policy, well above. We're at twenty, twenty-five percent, and then we do have the option to allocate this money for that one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. I, I. And a budget amendment.
But, okay, it, I, I, you're throwing out a, a, I get what you're saying here, Henry, so you're right. If we, if we're short, which we are, we're gonna be short about a hundred and thirty-five projected. Could be worse, probably won't be better, uh, but it, it will come out of fund bu- balance because it's not a budgeted item, okay? And nobody should be working that way where you're, where you're, um, you have unbudgeted amounts. Now, does it happen? Yes, uh, we're, and again, I'll go back. We're lucky enough that we've, we've been in the plus the last couple of years to be able to add to our fund budget. But when you start talking about budget amendments, now you're talking about taking away from somebody else. And that's, that's a, that's a whole nother discussion that we have. We believe that we can get this, uh, under control without having to affect other people's budgets. But we need to try and stop the bleeding as much as we can for the rest of twenty twenty-five.
But the additional bleeding, Mayor, is twenty thousand dollars.
No, the additional bleeding is a hundred and thirty-five.
Well, but, but that's baked in.
If we could've figured out a way to save a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars by the end of the year, we'd do it.
But we're talking just the savings, and I don't wanna diminish it. It's twenty thousand dollars is really what this.
It's a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
What we're talking about hour reductions, and the hour reductions result in twenty thousand dollars in savings. And I guess for twenty thousand dollars, we're, we're in for nickel, we're in for dime kinda thing. And it, to me, it just seems like the, uh, interruption and, and all that we could bring the public along on this and maybe get some good input when you're putting the RFP together. Is this all my point is?
Yeah, okay.
I mean.
Again, I'll go back to my comments I said before. If you choose as a council to not go with our recommendation, staff's recommendation, and run through the mayor's office, we're okay with that. We felt that it was important for us to bring forward a way of saving the city, reducing that deficit, uh, for the remainder of the year. Twenty twenty-six is a whole different bailiwick, you know? I mean, if we stay with our current contract, we don't even know, you know, what our grant money is gonna be for next year. I mean, we, what did you say it was, uh, I think you actually even said it too, uh, that we originally were getting like seventy-four percent?
That goes back a number of years, but in recent years, it's been, it was, prior to COVID, it was in the fifties, fifty-eight percent. Then it went to a hundred, and then it went back to fifty-four is where it is today. So it's been in more recent past, it's been in the fifty pers- fifties percent.
But that could go down depending on the number of people that apply.
Absolutely.
With RFPs, so we don't have to know. And I think this is also important too, you guys, we don't live on an island here. We're not the only community that's talking about this. You know, there's many communities that are looking at different ways of doing it. You know, again, staff has done a great job of, of, of reaching out to other communities and reaching out to the DOT and reaching out to Brown Cab to, to come up with a plan here. But again, Henry, if, if, if you could convince enough of the council members that we don't need to save that twenty thousand dollars, I'm okay. Or if you wanna change the hours a little bit, like Dimitri suggested, I'm okay with that. But again, we just felt that, you know, we needed to, we know that we needed to bring something forward to you.
Mayor, I'd like to move that council accept the recommendation to reduce shared ride, um, taxi service hours as presented.
Okay, we have a motion by Paul and a second by Eric that we approve, uh, the proposed changes in service hours, uh, as recommended on our memo, and I'm just gonna read them real quick here. Uh, Sunday would be eight AM to three forty-five PM. Monday through Thursday, seven AM to eight PM. Uh, Friday, seven AM to eight PM, and Saturday, seven thirty AM to eight PM. Uh, any further discussion?
I just had a quick question.
Yep.
Um, for Brown Cab, uh, why don't you accept credit cards and debit cards and our cash only?
So when you, every dollar of revenue that the shared ride taxi services collects has to be credited to the municipality as Fairbox revenue. To process credit cards and debit cards is associated, there's a fee associated with that. So the only way that as an organization or any contractor can utilize those services, they have to build into their hourly rate a higher amount. And we've historically been uncomfortable taking a shot in the dark, and we don't wanna charge you ten thousand dollars a year for potential credit card processing fees through the hourly rate that don't get realized. It's easy enough with the, the clientele we serve. Um, the vast majority of them are okay with the type. Uh, but I think being twenty twenty-five, the DOT and, and some folks are gonna have to come up with a way to figure out how to let us use credit card processing and not have to inflate our hourly rate to do so.
Thank you.
Any other comments? John?
Um, I, I think you've made a very good, uh, argument, uh, to, that there's, in the evenings, there's other options for people that, that, that need rides home from the bar, et cetera. That was one of the complaints, or one of the constituents that were having an issue with this. Um, the other people were worried about getting to work, and other people were worried about getting to the hospital. Uh, our urgent care is eight AM to six thirty, so we've got that covered. Uh, I think it's appropriate to pull the hours from people who can get ride homes from the bar from another, another source. Uh, I'd like to see, uh, at the borders here, us be able to get people to their jobs at, eh, right on the edges. So for that reason, I'm gonna ask to motion to amend the hours to be six forty-five to eight fifteen PM, Monday through Friday.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, so we have a amended motion. I think we could.
Yeah, there was a motion to amend.
Okay, a motion to amend. Uh, so he's talking about just, uh, adjusting the hours Monday through Friday from six forty-five AM to eight fifteen PM. I'm hoping that works within your schedule, if you had a half an hour, you know? Somebody's gotta help me out here. Do we have to vote on that, or is it just an amended?
You need to.
Do I have to vote on the amended motion first and then the regular motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So we, we have any discussion on the amended motion? Any questions on the amended motion?
Can you give me a second just to find? I'm, I'm, I've lost where I was, and I was looking for what the s- what the adjustment to the start time was. I'm sorry. Is that?
I, I could tell you. It went from, now it's from six thirty to six forty-five.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
There it is.
So I'm gonna ask Barb to call the roll on the amended motion.
Can you restate it?
The amended motion is, it only has to do with Monday through Friday of the motion, and that's from six forty-five AM to eight fifteen PM. So that's the only part of the amended motion. That's what we're voting on right now. I think we'll do a roll call too, so I'll let Barb do that. Okay, so he asked for the amended motion, so it is still Paul and Eric.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right.
We get these all the time.
First one I've had. Uh, Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
No.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
No.
Cory Nagel.
No.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Seven ayes, three noes. Motion passes.
Wait a second. Eric Halverson.
Oh, sorry, you did.
Sorry, I was counting and I wasn't right. Okay, so we have six ayes, seven noes, or six ayes, four noes. Motion carries.
All right. Okay, so now we have, we're back to the motion with that amendment. Any other discussion on that? Hearing none, uh, Barb will call the roll on that.
I have a question.
Okay, Dimitri. Sorry, I'm trying.
Can, can, can I motion to amend the amendment?
You, you certainly can.
Okay, then I would make a motion that we amend the amendment to Monday through Friday, six thirty AM until ten PM.
Second. Not, you, you're asking the motion to be amended.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so that would, Paul would have to agree to it, and then Eric would have to agree to it.
No.
So it doesn't matter what Eric decides. Okay, any other discussion? All right, Barb's gonna call the roll.
Uh, let me ask a question before we do that, please. So if we're, if we are amending to seven AM to eight PM, and we are looking to just shift time by fifteen minutes, is that correct?
Fifteen minutes before and fifteen minutes after.
Okay, so you're, you're actually adding, adding some time to it, is what you're doing. Okay, never mind.
Yep.
Thank you.
Good to know. Yeah, good that you understand. Everybody are ready to vote now? Okay, ready? Okay, thank you. Barb's gonna call the roll.
All right. Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Cory Nagel.
No.
Henry Velicker.
No.
Eric Halverson.
No.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
No.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
Six ayes, four noes, motion carried.
All right, thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate it. I, I think you're very helpful with that too. Okay, uh, before we just get off the topic real quick, since we have people Facebook Live on here, I, I, I think it's important that we just, sorry for this, but I just wanna share the Wapaka County Transportation Program's phone number with you. You probably can find it on the website, but it's seven one five, two five eight, six two seven nine. So if you want more information on that, uh, contact them. All right, thank you. Uh, next up, we have, uh, the recommendation to initiate the RFP process for shared ride taxi service in twenty twenty-six instead of renewing Brown Cab's contract. Steph, you just wanna explain the contract and, and the other years of that?
Sure, um, I will read the purpose of this, just to give a little bit of background. The purpose of this memo is to recommend the city of Wapaka not renew existing contract with Brown Cab Services for the shared ride taxi program in twenty twenty-six, and instead initiate a request for proposal to explore more cost-effective and sustainable transit service options. Um, as just previously discussed, we are looking at a, about approximately a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar deficit. Um, some of the including factors, as we had mentioned multiple times, is pre-COVID. Levels have reduced, agency fare levels have declined, ridership has decreased, and, uh, rider fares are insufficient to close the gap, and operation costs continue to rise with inflation. We recognize the value that public transit brings to the community. However, under condit- current conditions, continued operation through our current contract is not financially feasible without significant and ongoing over expenditure beyond our levy allowable limits. Um, I don't know how much more to go into. I feel like I've.
No, I.
Mentioned.
That's awesome, really.
Okay.
I mean, really what it comes down to is, uh, we have an agreement with Brown Cab, uh, for, it was a two-year agreement with, uh, re-
Three optional.
One year.
One year.
And we're requi- we're suggesting that we do not, uh, continue that agreement, which means that we wanna go out to RFP. It doesn't mean that Brown Cab is not gonna make a bid on that. We just feel like we need to work a little bit more on that agreement, and the best way to do that is to just, uh, not, not re-enter into this same contract, uh, with them. We'll see what happens. Obviously, there are. Obviously, there are other options that are happening out there too. But it is not our intent to not have a taxi service in town, but we do believe that we, we need to go out to RFP for twenty twenty-six and thereafter. Anybody have any comments on that? Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion by Olson, second by Velicker, that we recommend to initiate RFP process for Shared Ride Taxi Service in twenty twenty-six instead of renewing Brown Cab's contract. Any further discussion? Henry, go ahead.
This probably goes in the column of a dumb question. We give them a notice, they potentially can bid. They're gonna, do, are we closing the, you, do I understand it right? If they put in a bid that's higher than what we currently have, which doesn't make any sense that they would do that. So we're, we're, we're basically, we can still consider their bid. I guess I should say this easier. We can still consider their potential bid and still have the option of this current contract. Because a hundred and twenty-day notice basically locks us. Done.
Right.
We're severing.
Right.
But we, but if they come and sharpen their pencils, do whatever they need to do, we can still enter, enter into a new thing with them.
We think that the agreement that we have with them right now needs to be tweaked. And so we would, we would suggest, not from, just from a monetary standpoint, but from the contract itself. No fault of Brown Cab or anything, it just, we feel like there's savings in there if we do go out to RFP. Now, will they come in at a higher bid? We can't, you know, we, we can't, we can't really see if that's gonna happen or not until they do come in. Who knows?
And I think this period gives us the ability to lean on the vets home and maybe get that agreement back or do something. I don't, I, I don't know. But it does give us some options, I think, of some more time. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, any other thoughts? Colin?
I would just say that many people have called and talked and said, please save the taxi. And I think even the gentleman named Dennis, who worked at GFL, said tonight when he came here, oh, I thought this was something totally different than it is. We are not voting to get rid of the taxi. It's very clear to me that this group wants to have a taxi for our service. They want to have transportation services for our constituents, and what we're doing is allowing this to go out to RFP so we can afford those transportation services. This is not to get rid of taxi service, transportation service in our community. So I, I think it should be said very clearly whenever anybody asks you. We are trying to keep our transportation services in our community. Because there seems to be a lot of confusion about it, that we're trying to get rid of it, and we are not. And that was, that's my comment.
Yeah, if I could just piggyback real quick, great comments, Colin. I, I do want, along with that, it's really important that we understand that we have senior citizens and disabled people that have a very difficult time if we did not have the taxi service. And so all the more reason why we want to do that. But also, you know, we are trying to build our community by having, building houses and having more. And to have a taxi service, I don't know what you could put on value, but I think there's a value in community development by having a taxi service in our community too. So again, we, we, I, I think that goes along exactly with what you said, Colin. So thank you for that.
Thanks for those comments, Mayor. I appreciate it, because I, I'm hearing you and I appreciate your support. But we all gotta know, we gotta come in with more than ten thousand dollars. And it's a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollar proposition potentially. And if it's important service, it's gotta compete with the other operations in the budget process for money.
If I may, I just want to reiterate what I had mentioned during the public hearing. I'm just gonna reread this, so it's clear. The city is working very closely with Wapaka County to better find a long-term transportation option that will serve both city residents and people in nearby areas. So just, we are working very, very closely with the county, and we are trying to find a service that is more efficient, affordable, and useful for everyone. So I just wanted to take a minute to reiterate that.
Thanks. Paul? How many years are we into this current contract? Is it three?
Two.
Two, so we're.
It's a two-year contract.
And then three additional extensions?
One-year extension.
Three, okay. So if you look at the amount of inflation we've had and our dollar become worth less than it has been, it's entirely possible that when we go out to RFP, that that number that we might be offered would be greater than if we just extended the contract. So I just wanted to make, just point that out, that it's not a slam dunk going out to RFP.
Even if it is greater, we believe by rewriting the contract, we're still gonna save some money.
Okay.
That we, we understand that.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, any other questions? I'm sorry, you guys gotta help me here. It's past a couple hours here. We're, do we have a motion?
You had a second.
Okay, thank you.
Barb, you wanna call the roll?
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Scott Porczatski.
Aye.
Eric Halverson.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. Next up, we have license report number seventeen twenty-nine. This is a Class B intoxicating liquor and Class B fermented malt beverage license for Royal One Hospitality LLC DBA Reflections Bar and Grill. It's actually for, on Grand Stevens Drive there. And this is just a change in agent only. So nothing new here, just a change in agent. We'd be looking for a motion to approve. Anybody?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Halverson, second by, I'm sorry, Colin Dykstra, to approve license port seventeen twenty-nine. Hey, stick with me, just a few more minutes, guys. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against, say no. Motion carried. I have an appointment that needs to be made, and that is done through our council president. So I'll turn it over to Paul Mayo.
Thank you, Mayor. The mayor would like to appoint Josh Finch to the Public Engagement Committee. At this time, I'd need a motion and a second to approve the mayor's appointment.
Move to approve.
Second.
By Olson, second by Dykstra, to approve the mayor's appointment of Josh Finch to the Public Engagement Committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Mayor, back to you.
Thank you, Paul. He's always quick at getting his part on, isn't he? Yeah. Next up, we have, this is coming from City Planning Commission, actually. This is a conditional use permit for the Wapaka Foundry Incorporated. And it's, it has to do with six hundred industrial drive. It's on page eighty-six through ninety-five. I'm gonna just summarize this real quick, because it's, it's. What, what's happening is if, most of us know where the old Ad Inc., buyer's guide building is out in the industrial park. Wapaka Foundry now owns that property. They're using the warehouse in the back for their, for manufacturing purposes and stuff like that. But the, the blue building, as I would call it, or light gray ugly building, or you could call it too, it hasn't, they haven't been using that very much except for storage. Well, Wapaka County, the Wapaka County is remodeling their buildings, and they were need, there was a need to move people out so that they could do the remodeling. So they asked the foundry if they could rent that place. It takes a conditional use permit though to allow that. And so even though I know they've been in there for a couple of months, all right, ready, we still felt like we needed to make sure that we were following our own rules, and they were very accommodating with that too. So that's the gist of the conditional use permit. City Planning Commission did approve it on a unanimous vote. So just looking for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Just second.
Go ahead.
Second.
Motion by Porczatski, second by Hagan, that we approve the conditional use permit for six hundred industrial drive. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no.
Abstain.
And one abstention. You won't have to hear me speak as much, because I'm giving Juliana a break yet, but next month, it starts. She'll have to be doing these things, so. All right, next up, license report number seventeen thirty. This is an operator's license, bartender's license. You could see that on page ninety-six. We would need a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Velicker, second by Nagel, that we approve the license port number seventeen thirty. Discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Department head reports. Sorry, we won't do them.
Oh, you funny guy. You funny guy.
We won't do them today. I, I do want to ask them, I know it's been long, but I do want to ask them, is there anything Department heads that's not in your report that you want to talk about at all? I know that Matt has been really nice to, all of you have been really nice to be here tonight, but Matt's preparing for EAA, and I know they got, what did, what did, Brittany said you had like four hundred calls?
I don't know if it's that many, but we got a lot.
Okay, maybe she exaggerated, but yeah. So, yeah, EAA is coming, and of course, people do come here and use our hotels and our airports. So it's pretty awesome. Dustin, you wanna?
We're having our first Fulton Street Public Information Meeting on July thirty-first at six PM in the basement, meeting room A and B. So if you want to know more about what's gonna happen on Fulton Street in the next couple of years, come check it out.
Yeah, I would advise, if you haven't seen it yet, that you do try to attend part of that. It's just open. They'll make a short presentation, and then they'll answer questions and stuff like that. So council, if you have a chance, because Fulton Street, there'll be some big, there'll be some changes there that you'll want to weigh in on, and you want, you'll want to see the residents' opinion on those things too. So I think that's important. Anybody else? All right, nothing from the recommendations. I have one thing. I will be on vacation. If a retired person can be on vacation, I'll be on vacation. From, I'm, I'm gonna miss the, the fifth meeting, although I'm gonna attend by Teams, Microsoft Teams. And then also, so Paul, if you're gonna be here, okay? And I'm also gonna miss City Planning, Henry, so you're gonna be here? Okay, and I'll be back the tenth of August for those events that are happening on that next month. I just thought I'd let you know. Okay? Anything else? Mayor?
Yeah, Brittany just texted me. She said she did not exaggerate. It's been three hundred and ninety-eight calls since February.
So she's watching.
You got a binder.
God bless her, she's watching.
Well, thank you. Well, she did buy one. Paul? Move to adjourn. Motion by Hagan, second by Olson, that we adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Thanks, everybody, for hanging in. Eight fifty-four PM.